County work session ordered. First item on the agenda is our introduction of new employees. Do they have any new employees here?
Anybody that wants to be a new employee? All right, we'll move on to identify future work meeting topics. Commissioner Sumner, I think you might have one?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I got a few of them, actually.
Okay.
Um, so I had, uh, uh, would like an update on the childcare, childcare situation in the county, how we're doing with that. And also Park Place, I believe the county is still a, is a partner with Park Place?
Park Place?
If we can get an update on how that's coming along, or if we're still partners with them.
You know what he's referring to? Pam?
Okay, okay. And then, uh, last, Mr. Chair, I've been contacted by, uh, Rachel from Taylor Township in regards to, uh, chloride and the county policy when it comes to the chloride on county roads. Uh, her and I believe seven or eight other townships recently met, and I know that the county engineer Bruce has, uh, attended one of their meetings. So I'm hoping that maybe at some future work meeting, we can discuss the policy for county chloride and how we can, um, maybe begin some discussions and dialogue with, you know, these townships. Cause I know that there's some concern. Uh, there are some folks that like it or love it, and there are some that are not too fond of it. So I think, um, this letter that was addressed to, you know, the three of us, I think it probably warrants at least a conversation.
Thank you, Commissioner Sumner. And I have already, I got the letter as well, and I'm, um, sent it, copied to Administrator Barry and, and our Highway Engineer Bruce has bargained on it to give them a little bit of a heads up to start, you know, getting, getting prepared for, you know, whether it's the next board meeting or the following one to hopefully get some information on that. You know, what are the pros and cons? What are the costs involved? If we don't do it, if we do it, you know, all that. So I think that's, uh, that's an important topic. I think that we should get covered as soon as we can fit it in. Any other future week meeting topics from Commissioner Winger or Carlson? No? All right. We will move on to our July, or June 21st storm update and discussion about all things relative to our emergency.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'll get things kicked off here. As you know, we've said at the room a little differently this afternoon so that we could have more of an exchange, a dialogue with the board, uh, so you can get your questions answered and that we can make, uh, the dialogue a little bit more free and not have to use simply the podium. And so we can all kind of share in that dialogue. Um, you'll hear from a number of the key staff that are around the table today in regard to their response and, um, how we coordinated the response and kind of where we are in the status of things and especially, um, kind of what's next, what needs to continue to happen. Uh, but let me just kind of recap at a very high level. And then what we'll do is we'll turn it over to our Emergency Management Director, Chris Muller here in just a moment. But, um, as you all know, on Friday, uh, in the, in the, during the day of June 20th, a few weeks back, severe storms began to develop in, in North Dakota and started moving their way towards the Bemidji area. And then late that evening, Friday into Saturday morning, those storms rapidly intensified and gained a significant strength. And by early morning Saturday, the June 21st, the National Weather Service began issuing tornado warnings for Southern Beltrami County. Those warnings were issued multiple times. Outdoor warning sirens were also activated and the code red notifications were also sent multiple times over a short period. Um, as the storm advanced towards Beltrami County and particularly the Bemidji area, um, it surged and produced catastrophic direct line winds estimated at 120 miles per hour of the equivalent of a category three hurricane or an EF2 tornado. It swept across much of Southern Beltrami County. Uh, torrential rain also resulted in flash flooding downtown when it was over. About a 10 mile wide area of destruction was sort of left, um, that, that moved across Southern Beltrami County. Um, most intense damage was of course, southern, um, like the city of Bemidji and southern, uh, Lake Bemidji area over towards, um, uh, Lake Avenue area. Uh, 911 dispatchers immediately being, began getting calls and were overwhelmed with hundreds of calls in a very short period of time. Uh, dozens of gas leaks were reported. There were downed power lines that were sparking. Uh, endless reports of trees down and, uh, over 30,000 customers that were without power essentially immediately. Uh, roads were impassable. Uh, devastation was, uh, something like we haven't seen, uh, in the very recent history. As the sun rose, it was clear that, uh, this catastrophic event would require, um, additional resources. The county was just not resourced to take on this event on its own. And so immediately activated the Emergency Operations Center and reached out to mutual aid partners who began coordinating immediately with us. Uh, representatives from Minnesota Homeland Security and Emergency Management Agency were, uh, quick to respond as well as other agencies of the state, um, and even local levels. Uh, the city and county and state resources, uh, immediately began clearing debris. It was very important for us to at least get passable most of the roads for additional emergency services that might be needed. Uh, and that happened pretty quickly, at least to get to a single lane. Uh, as the day progressed, it was discovered that hundreds of structures had been damaged and that many people, um, were not going to be able to, um, reside in their structures. So we immediately opened up the shelter uh, and housed that over at the Sanford Center. Uh, it's ironic that that activity of opening the shelter in a catastrophic storm event was something that we had trained on simply two months ago. Uh, so that really was very smooth operation for us and the team. Uh, you'll hear more about that experience. Uh, over a hundred people were sheltered and over 200 people were provided meals initially. Um, and, uh, since the shelter's been closed now and it's turned into a disaster assistance center, which is also being, um, um, organized with Salvation Army, United Way, Community Resources Center, uh, the county, the city and others. Uh, Red Cross and Salvation Army continued to support response efforts by providing meals uh, and water. Um, as you know, the county board chair did declare a state of emergency on June 21st, uh, shortly after the storms passed. And then the county board ratified that, extending it to 30 days on June 23rd. The governor did visit, um, Bemidji and, uh, Beltrami County and toured, uh, the area and also provided a press relief, uh, rest, press release, excuse me, or I should say press conference rather on Tuesday, uh, June 24th. And, uh, on Friday, June 27th, that are urging, he did declare a peacetime emergency, allowing additional resources to be utilized in the recovery of this event. Uh, we just want to also mention that, uh, Beltrami Electric and also Otter Tail Power Company has made exceptional progress in short order, getting a lot of people, um, power back up and running. Some within 24 hours, uh, most within a few days and, uh, pretty much everybody within the week. Uh, we also have extended the, the Beltrami County demolition landfill hours. Uh, those are running extended time periods right now. You'll hear more from, uh, Bruce and Brian on that. And we also opened up an additional processing facility over the Target, uh, fairground, old fairground site, uh, which is also being utilized. Uh, of course, the best news out of all of this is that there were no injuries or deaths reported from this particular event. Uh, so we're very fortunate on that front. Um, as it relates to, um, uh, the, what we have planned for you in presentations today, we'll go around the room and, uh, you'll hear briefings from our Emergency Management Director, as I mentioned. Also will provide a facilities update, sort of how was county infrastructure impacted as a result of this situation. You hear a little bit about the shelter and how that was stood up and how it was utilized and such. Uh, we'll also talk a little bit about what the sheriff's office has seen in regard to calls and responses and other issues. We'll do a short forestry briefing as well, uh, so you'll know kind of what it looks like as it relates to damage to county assets from a forestry perspective and, and other perspective. Um, we can also provide a brief veterans update, uh, you know, in regard to sort of what we're seeing, uh, in, in veteran needs. Uh, after that, we'll move into a disaster reimbursement overview, limitations and process discussion, which our Emergency Management Director will, uh, provide. So you'll learn a little bit more like, how does this process work from here on out? What are our timelines? What are we eligible for reimbursement on? How, how does all of that work? We'll share information on that. Uh, from there, we'll also talk about debris management, spend considerable time, uh, discussing what we're seeing at the, uh, at the debris processing facilities, you know, how they're being utilized, what kind of materials are coming through, what additional resources we might need. So we'll provide additional information on that. Uh, we'll also provide a, a small, uh, update on insurance for the county in particular, for public infrastructure and also available funding for response to this disaster. So we'll answer some questions around that. Uh, and then hopefully we'll have a little bit of time at the end, uh, for additional questions and answers in some direction that we might have, um, uh, that we're seeking from the board as it relates to moving forward. Uh, after that, there will be a short presentation as well on, um, the permitting process. Uh, some people have been asking about like, you know, what's involved now and with now the storm has passed and what do I have to do and those kinds of things. So we'll have a brief update on that as well. So quite a bit of information to get through. Uh, with that, I'll turn it over to our Emergency Management Director, uh, Chris Muller to start us off.
More buddies that have been with us for the last week and a half here, uh, as we've been going through this devastating disaster that impacted, uh, Beltrami. Welcome to our, our public that is here today as well as doing online. It's a, a good opportunity for us to communicate directly with you as to what we've been doing on, uh, in the background as well. This has been a lot of work that isn't newsworthy or it's not all been exciting, but it's still consuming a lot of our time. Um, is, uh, what I'm going to kind of do is kind of just go over leading up to the event, the event, the immediate aftermath, touch on some of the activity that's taken place with a lot of my partners to go a little bit more in depth on what they were doing. I don't want to steal anything from the starters, shouldn't make a storm rip and some of that, but, uh, we'll, uh, we'll let them talk about what they, uh, want to do. So June 21st, 2025, this event actually started sooner than that. And the fact that, um, Tuesday, I started watching the Storm Prediction Center. For those of you that don't, only have an amateur cloud looker and, you know, pay attention to the weather and, you know, I'm also a certified skyworn instructor. So I go a little bit more in depth and I look at the details to what the forecasters are talking about and what they think that their, uh, forecast needs to reflect in the bay. And it became very evident that midweek, uh, even, uh, even early week, uh, is that we were in for something that was going to be hitting in the weekend. And, um, it happened, but we didn't want it to, but we were prepared. And that is a good thing. And to Tom's point, we didn't have a single injury or death. And, you know, that is tragic as it is for our community and having responded. That's worth celebrating is that we were prepared and nobody got hurt. So I just wanted to highlight that. Thank you, people of the mix up. So we started, uh, public messaging and if you don't have Facebook, it doesn't matter. You don't need to have a Facebook account. You don't need to worry about people spying on you. Our pages are open for anybody to be there. So all I have to do is go to facebook.com/beltrami county emergency management and even see the posts and updates that were thrown out there. So this is one of the first references that I made and this was on June 19th. So this three days prior to the event and notifying, uh, our followers, the public and our residents that, hey, the weather service and the storm prediction center is really looking uh, towards the end of the weekend into the weekend. And being in an enhanced risk two days out, uh, is relatively rare for this far enough. But it's something that you normally see hours or a day before, not two days before. And then a little bit later, uh, on June 20th is the weather, uh, I'm sorry, the Storm Prediction Center, uh, put us into a very rare level four or five moderate list. That's, uh, I didn't get an image of it, but that's where there would be another circle on that map that would be red. And that's indicating that there is, uh, a fairly significant chance, uh, of a storm and what they did categorize it out, you know, tornado, hail and wind threats. And we were really starting to max out on the wind threat and that really concerned me because it was looking really similar to some of the other, um, blowdowns that we had. And before we go on is I just want to give the, um, National Weather Service and forecasters that were working that night a big shout out and thank you that they didn't forget about us because they were simultaneously dealing with tornadoes that unfortunately were deadly uh, in the James John Enderland and southeastern, uh, North Dakota. So they were still having to warn for those storms because this one developed ahead of those and they still provided us with ample warning, um, that these storms were coming in. So we were getting this message out, also letting some of our response partners know, uh, that they need to up their preparedness as well. Next slide. So here's just a, another little bit, uh, timeline. Here's another post on the top left. Uh, late Friday evening, they issued spirit alerts to watch for us. And then, then the show started around 12:20, National Weather Service issued a tornado warning and that was for significant rotation. Um, so the, uh, Sully and Shetland, I was trying to merge those two towns, uh, together with, uh, Sully and Shetland. There's some significant, uh, rotations out there. And unfortunately, uh, if it stayed on the trajectory, this was, uh, heading straight for, uh, Bemidji. So that was at 12:25. 10 minutes later, uh, we had gotten the corporate notification out. Everybody got the wireless emergency alerts on your cell devices. Uh, and those, those words are sold and they, they undoubtedly contributed to people's lives being saved. And then, uh, about 14 minutes later, uh, as the tornado threat was, uh, looking a little bit less concerning, but then all of a sudden the velocity just exploded. And, um, what velocity is, is the radar, uh, demonstrating which way the winds are going. And if you look at the image on the lower left, the red is presentation going away from the radar, which is located in Windham, North Dakota, which is the Grand Forest Weather Office's radar that they use. And green is going towards the area. So if you know those two pieces of information, Bemidji is in the epicenter for some incredible winds. And I was thinking a hundred miles an hour would be catastrophic and just, you know, change, but when the National Weather Service came over, the damage assessment, uh, they actually, uh, estimated that the top winds were 120 miles per hour. Uh, one noteworthy, uh, event is at the Bemidji Regional Airport. The weather sensor out there, they registered a 106 mile per hour wind gust and they were not in the worst of the damage. We had a lot of damage, but they were not in the worst of the damage that we, uh, were able to, uh, review. And then down on the bottom right, we were able to activate the Bemidji sirens for a second time. Uh, they sound for four minutes and then they cool down because you burn them out. We can just run continuously. So we let them cycle through and then we activated them one full more activation, uh, just providing that, that we're going to receive and, uh, warning. Next. So as, uh, they moved over the city of Bemidji, there's somebody was kind of pointing out on the left that this kind of looks like a hook echo. It's not a traditional hook echo. Uh, it would be a little bit more, uh, counterclockwise with that notch coming in. So what this has demonstrated, and I cannot add it on a loop, uh, that you can play, but that leading edge, South Eternal River, you have this captured just east of Bemidji and moving into just north of Castle Lake, that Boeing segment that is kind of leading the wave, you will, that's where your strongest winds are. And that correlates with where the worst damage, um, that we had across Southern Beltrami County and then hopping to the Leach Lake Reservation, uh, and the Pennington area. Uh, and as it continued to progress across Northern Minnesota, it produced, um, severe weather, uh, all the way across into the U.P. of Michigan. So if you watch this event, it started in western North Dakota and went off into the upper Michigan, uh, upper peninsula of Michigan. This is definitely the definition of when it was classified duration, uh, which is a very rare, uh, weather occurrence, which essentially just means a long traffic. Don't want to miss speed, but I think it's 270 miles is the path, uh, that it needs to maintain most of your current period. And, uh, not only we're leaving, uh, epicenter, but we had the, uh, the strongest winds, uh, on that Boeing segment. Um, next slide then. So this is, uh, a loop that plays. And if you look right when it gets into the county line, um, and where that first polygon, where that first red, uh, shape is to the left, that's when the forecasters were detecting that, um, not really looking, uh, rotation. And, um, people get really, I don't want to say excited when we hear tornado or that a tornado is something that you want to achieve. A hundred and twenty miles an hour straight line winds is going to be more destructive than a tornado. Because a tornado is essentially going to be a pencil drawing the line and a directional or the straight line wind event is going to be one of those fat markers, uh, writing across the map. So that's just a little bit of perception, you know, but there may have been a few embedded tornadoes in this, but it would have been covered up, uh, by the straight line wind. And there's one little area of damage around that, uh, uh, Clearwater County, Beltrami County, and Hollywood County, uh, border area that I want to find some time to get down there and look just to see, uh, if there was anything that was, uh, tactically. But this is the velocity, uh, scan and you can see just how tight that rotation was. And then that incredible red and white indicators as it moves over Bemidji. And that's where that strong, strong, one thing that I'd also like to just, uh, bring up again and, uh, everywhere as well, where it was presented on before is Minnesota's radar gaps. And Minnesota, uh, particularly the Beltrami County area, we're served by two radars. Uh, it's the same X rad radar system and it is made out of North Dakota and Duluth, Minnesota. And we fall approximately halfway between those two radars. So what that means for us is that the lower 8,000 feet of a storm is not being picked up by the radar. That's called low level radar coverage. And in most severe weather events, uh, clearly identified storm features such as tornadoes and that most of the ground rotation you need in that lower levels. And we're still working on, uh, ways to mitigate, uh, the radar gaps. But, um, did that make a big difference in the morning of this storm? I don't think so. I think the weather service knocked this one out of the park. Uh, we issued the appropriate warnings, uh, and they were given surprise with the magnitude when we did the, uh, the damage assessment. Next slide. So immediately our response started. As Tom alluded to, um, Chief Sherwood, uh, was in the EOC, Chief Mastin, their public works. We were making our notifications, obviously the city, uh, was a little bit more impacted than, uh, our infrastructure was. And, uh, one thing that I forgot to mention is, uh, at, on Friday evening, when I was seeing that, okay, this is actually going to happen. I came into our 911 center and was just there and said, oh, everything here. I'm like, all right, here to help you if you need it. And I'm so glad that I was because, uh, it was 37 hours before I got home, uh, after that, but they were so overwhelmed. And Sheriff Rigs will bring up some of the things that they went through and the fact that we lost our communications for 15 minutes with the radio system. And as a dispatcher, you know, previously in dispatch is, that's terrifying. You don't know what your officers need. You don't know what your firefighters need. You don't know which your S needs. And the other thing that is terrifying for dispatcher is our community's needs can't get to them. And so this, uh, this storm really impacted dispatch as well. Um, but it was cleared at, uh, 2:37. I need another post, uh, just to alert people that, uh, there is extensive damage around the Bemidji area and much of Southern Beltrami County. Please do not travel unless it is an emergency because we had people stuck everywhere. Uh, in the few hours after that, there's, it was nothing, uh, short of all hands on back to get routes that we can get ambulance and fire trucks through. We had a medical out in the mission area, which is southeastern Beltrami County, and, um, we couldn't get Castle Lake ambulance out there. So we just sent the Bemidji. We couldn't get the Bemidji there because there was no help for them. And we had to get Highway Department out there, prioritize getting those passports that we can at least meet the, uh, essential emergency needs, uh, of our community. Uh, Brian quickly realized that we needed more, uh, opportunity. And so the Ways Division, uh, it extended the hours and then he'll explain that he extended the hours and then it extended the hours. And we're looking to extend to possibly more locations, uh, and probably more hours. Uh, then, um, I was in communication with, uh, Chair Gossberg and, um, my recommendation was to declare an emergency meeting and he was in concurrence. Uh, and, uh, so that, uh, action was taken. Um, we briefed Administrator Barry and Sheriff Rigs, uh, and Craig, I showed him, uh, to where EOC offered his assistance, not only to the community, but to us that were stuck there as well. So personal appreciation for that, the commissioner. Uh, immediately our community came to him. And if you look at the bottom right, there's donations started pouring in everywhere and they were being consumed. And not only for our first responders, we had a number of, uh, residents that, uh, were displaced and, and needing temporary housing. And, uh, as Tom, uh, mentioned and Amy was going to, I explained in more detail and is, we were ready. And I'm so proud to say that. And we, prior to holding that training exercise, Amy did ask me, she said, well, whatever are these deficiencies? And it did not take me very long to say sheltering because we don't do it very often, fortunately. And I'm just glad that we were here prepared for that. Next slide. So this is just a, um, I don't have a lot of pictures. I think most people have access to the media on their own. Um, and I don't think you'll rip off a bunch of pictures from the, the news and such, but, uh, the National Weather Service was quick to send a team over. Um, they were, uh, two meteorologists that work out of the Grant Works and we were looking at the destruction and they came in from downtown. They came in on Adams Avenue and they're like, wow, you guys really got walled. And I was like, just wait, we're really beside the lake. And then went out there and neither one of them had seen this extensive of damage before in that wide of area. They've both seen tornadoes and hurricanes, but not in the north ones. And the fact that the core winds hit one of the most densely populated areas in northern Minnesota is, is quite frankly, just bad luck. Next slide. Our EOC, uh, has been open. We did, um, uh, make sure that we had all the meetings met for the weekend so that we were able to take, uh, part of Saturday and Sunday up. That doesn't mean the EOC staff were not working. We still worked. It was just that we weren't physically, uh, in the building. So with that is, uh, we did a lot of emails, coordination. Brian, uh, the first release out and, uh, you know, I saw the alert and got on the computer and got that notification out, uh, as well as making sure that the state is, uh, abreast of this to, uh, what we have going on, um, as well. And one other thing that I'd point out, the excellent partnership between, uh, Emergency Management and Public Health Emergency Preparedness is one of the things that we identified in our EOC is we lack adequate technology, or I should say lacked adequate technology and thanks to, uh, grant funding that Amy was able to leverage. Not only is, uh, public health and PP, uh, being served by the technology in there, we really leveraged it for Emergency Management to this response, uh, as well. So another thank you. And, uh, just Beltrami Electric, picture on the left there getting their briefing. Um, I believe this was a little bit deeper into the, uh, response uh, when they were proclaiming that they had every customer back on. So an absolutely monumental, uh, response from both Otter Tail Power Company and, um, Beltrami Electric. I'm not going to steal the story. Steve might, uh, share about that call on Sunday night at 10:20 when we were worried about this building. I'll let you tell that story. Next slide. Um, as was mentioned, the Governor Wallace did come up here, met with, uh, our elected officials, listened to some of the accounts of Emergency Management to our first responders, uh, and what our needs were. And, uh, in the process, which we'll talk about in a little bit here about giving state resources is we need that peacetime emergency, uh, designation uh, for Beltrami County. Our local state of emergency declaration opens up our resource to the county department, county department and city department. And have those, uh, different divisions and departments work together and ship resources. Um, but this also allows the opportunity for, uh, state resources to come up and assist us. So, um, I had my, uh, state liaison, Jennifer Olson from HSCM, our, our, sorry, acting as a home experience, emergency manager, the regional program coordinator, uh, has been here. And when I'm too busy to type a call, I hand her my phone and she gives the information and then we get back to, uh, uh, whoever it was. So, uh, since then, uh, the governor has, uh, with the executive council, extended the peacetime emergency, which is going to allow us, uh, to move forward, um, in the recovering process. Last slide, I'm sorry, Dan. Uh, here is very, uh, non-comprehensive data with some of the damages that we have. This is from the partners at the, uh, American Red Cross. This is from the partners at the American Red Cross and they went and did some windshield and windshield surveys. As well as visited with some of the clients, constituents that they were talking to. We did have one destroyed of presidents and I'm not exactly sure where it's on the map. Can't, can't believe it's ceiling, but twenty three major damage, seventy one minor and ninety seven effective. I will say that this number, despite the American Red Cross efforts, is this is disproportionately involved. You can drive around and you can see that on my estimation, even outside of the city limits, especially on the side. Is probably one in four homes have some type of room tarp or tieback. As a temporary solution until permanent repairs can be made. So definitely one of, definitely the most significant natural disaster I've ever experienced outside of a tornado. But this is really where. We transition from that emergency response to the recovery. And that's where there's going to be a lot of bugging people for numbers. And I've already gotten some and they're quite staggering is I've got an initial report from the city of one point five million. They've already said double that. Bruce gave me one in five hundred to seven hundred and fifty thousand. I'm just going to double it now, Bruce. Because we both know disasters just keep getting more and more expensive, especially with. The future work that we need to do and Brian and I are going to be talking about that. To ensure that our future work in response to this is taken into consideration as well. That's what we did during last year's storm that hit us is we were able to estimate forward. What some of the activities, the solid waste in that kind of winter and successfully got seventy five percent of vacuum reversed as well. So other entities that are potential applicants in this, the townships, the school district, B S U, the D N R, the Lake Dometic State Park. Forestry trails and county departments and my advice to you is keep receipts, document and take pictures. So our I D A, E D A, A D A declaration, all of that is acronym soup that I digest. For you and the county to make sure that we come with a positive resolutions for recovery to this response. I will yield further questions, knowing that we're going to have further in depth reports from our county departments here.
Thank you, Chris. Should we just move through as we're wanting to probably make sure we get to everybody? And then we can look at questions after we've heard, because some of the questions that we might have right now will probably get answered by those that are presenting. So are we going in just in order around the room or do you have a method to the madness, Tom?
Thank you. We did talk about this and organize an order. So we'll do facilities and then the shelter, then the sheriff, forestry and veterans.
Okay. So Steve, take it away.
Well, I'll give an update on the downtown campus first. Sustained moderate damage compared to ground structures. We have multiple broken windows on campus, seven trees that were down. Last exterior flashing toward from the buildings. Including some that are way up by the historic courthouse near the dome. Very difficult to get at. Air conditioning units tipped over. Roof vent covers that we'll never find. And lots of windows that were. Trump pieces were tore off or adjusted out because of the pressures we've built with the timing of the storm. Reposition, I should say. So lots of, lots of those type of issues. Lots of repairs still in works. That Saturday morning early, we had facility management staff on site. Making building assessments with me and making repairs to our, start bucket up our facilities and such. So we had all the critical infrastructure for downtown campus was maintained throughout the storm. And until our utility power was restored, we had three electrical generators on campus. And they performed as expected, allowed the jail to function properly. Allowed computer and I T services to be maintained. Throughout the campus and then allowed our law enforcement center to be functional for emergency operations. Again, as Chris alluded, huge thanks to our utility companies. For my perspective as well. And to our outside contractors that helped us button back itself during that weekend. And right after the storm. We had our facilities started being powered back on on Sunday. The admin building still wasn't. And at about ten twenty, as Chris alluded to, five line teletrunk. Power trucks pulled up and they had power back to our facility. For this, this facility here. So lots of kudos to lots of people to make that happen. So both within our organization and outside of our organization. Some of our remote buildings, the highway department took a hit. Their cold storage building, part of the roof on these sites that tore off. Doors damaged. We had on the main facility. We had a lot of softens that were, you know, missing and were from the facility. Flashing damage roof vents. The radial tower that is located on the south end of the office building. There was about halfway up. It's just bent right over. Add to multiple, I don't trees down and some other doors that were damaged and some of the other buildings. The remote highway shop sheriff garages out right next to the highway building. And we had some trees up, roofs there, some flashing issues there. But kind of inspected that with what we were seeing. The old fairgrounds buildings behind Target. We had in the middle building, they had middle section of the roof was blown off. That was, that's one of the buildings that if you drive by it right now, we'll see a tar pit. We had, I'm sure there's a lot of you have been around there and there's multiple trees that were down. We had two trees on the roof. In our, we had a little storage shed out there and now it's just flat. So we did see a lot of wind. Yeah, that's kind of my update. You have any questions? I know Brian was going to give an update on solid waste facilities.
Mr. Sumner, do you have something?
Do we have buildings at the county fairground now with the current county fairground?
Yeah, I don't believe that any of those were damaged in the storm, but we're talking about the old fairground site. Yep.
But the new fairground.
The new fairground site did not have any damage to my knowledge of.
Just, the only damage that I know of is that there was about twenty five hundred dollars of the damage to the H vac system. On the one side of that's already works and getting repaired. They have two trees down and just very, very minor damage.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Go ahead, Brian, if you're next.
Yeah, specifically for facilities, all four of our buildings at the transfer station site all took some type of damage. The main office building actually blew a hole right through the, through the wall. We took significant water damage. The new, half of the new roof that we just put on is damaged. And the transfer station itself, it blew. A hole through the other side. You can see it must have just a pressure relief. So that opened up the, the storage building that. That the sheriff uses over there that had the least amount of damage, but it does have a little bit of fixing on it. So that's, that was a good news because we just put a new roof on that last year. So. And then the cold storage building, it needs a new ridge cap. It blew off. So that's the, I guess, the report for facilities there. I estimate we've already had some emergency repairs so we can stop the leaks. And we've had some water mitigation to try to dry out the downstairs. I'm estimating about a million dollars worth of damage on our facility.
Who's next? Amy?
Reporting out on the shelter and the resource center. So if you've already heard the irony of two months to the day. I was walking into the Sanford Center with Chris Muller to set up for practice training for shelter response. And that was no easy feat that day because we were not only training our community and our county, but our regional partners. And that proved to pay off because the most amount of calls that I got outside of our team was from our community. I thought to say, what can we do to help? So that was a nice reassurance to our shelter response. So I received the call at four A M from Chris and Justin Sherwood. That I needed to come to the E O C. We'd be setting up a shelter with the support of the Red Cross. So around eight o'clock, I headed over to the Sanford Center, maybe it was a little earlier than that. And one of the shelter, the Red Cross volunteers, Dave and I, we started setting dates up. And immediately text each of my individual staff members, checking in to see how they were doing. And then to ask them if they could report to the shelter. And in addition to that, I also messaged Anne who was on vacation. And tried to promise her to get her vacation in, but she said, as soon as I can get my driveway cleared, I'll be there. And she was, and she stayed with me all weekend. And in fact, if it wasn't for Anne, I wouldn't have gotten her to go home on Sunday because we just didn't have enough staff to staff the shelter. So some of the things that we provided at the shelter, we were responsible for registration. So we have a very robust process in tracking who comes and goes because you see resources. Make sure we're tracking how many people were feeding, how many people were giving supplies out to, who's in the building and not in the building. And who's spending the night and not spending the night. So lots of paperwork and I will get you some of that data at a future meeting, but for tonight, I just have some data. That I'll give at the end of my presentation. So we provided a place for people to come and just get out of the storm. For people who didn't have a place to go, that didn't have a way to leave, even though we were running off of natural gas. We still had it better than, than most people because they could come and charge their phones. They could come and get some water and we could serve them a meal. I couldn't be more grateful for the support from Bobby Anderson, the general manager for the Sanford Center. As soon as I called him and said, I need into the Sanford Center, he said, I'll meet you there. He came, he took care of us, didn't take care of his family first. Now you tell me that's dedication to your community. He went and found us hamburgers and hamburger buns so we could feed people lunch. He brought his own grill so we can grill with food because the electricity that we had, it didn't run the trailer list. It didn't run the A C, it didn't run the kitchen. So we had no electricity other than some outlets and some emergency lights. Then after we got done serving lunch and cleaning that up, Bobby went out to. John's rental and service agency will get us three quart potties because we don't have any trailers. So we had a building, but we needed a place for people to be able to go to the bathroom. And when you're serving five, six hundred people coming through your doors, you need a place for them to go to the bathroom. One of our biggest concerns on that first ending to the second date was the access to food and being able to get the. Enough food just to feed the people that were in our building and our first responders who were needing a place to come and get a hot meal. So about twelve thirty in the morning, our vitriolic finally came on and Bobby and I devised a plan that we found eggs, sausage, bacon and tater tots. And so at six o'clock in the morning, Bobby and I were in the kitchen making breakfast and we served about five hundred people that day. Due to the cancellation of the lake, we received donations of cookies, hot dogs and water. And that was able to service our second meal of the day. I think just for lack of, for lack of time and so everybody else gets an opportunity to speak. I'm going to say some of this maybe for our next P H P meeting, if that's okay with you gentlemen. So some of the data that I think I would like to record out on today, and this is just preliminary because I haven't finished going through everything. But we served a total of four thousand eight hundred and thirty, four thousand eight hundred and thirty eight people. And a total of three thousand two hundred and fifty three households. We served one thousand fifty meals, hundred and sixty four people spent the night with us. We had four hundred hours in volunteer work over the last year or the last week. And this doesn't include people that we put up at Airbnb's and at Super D. I would like to share in more detail about how we decided to close the shelter. And our process and moving into a resource center, but I think I'm going to save that for another meeting just for sake of time. But I do want you to know that it was a very thoughtful process and it wasn't because the Sanford Center didn't not want us there. And it wasn't because they had another event. It was because people had alternate housing. And there were only seventy people at the end of the day that we filtered out that said, we need help finding.
Thank you, Amy.
Commissioner, Chief Jason Wicks, I was fortunate enough to not be here during the storm. But I am very fortunate to have excellent staff that saw us through this, including Director Muller. Chief W. Walt and Joe Klezak amongst dozens of other staff that gave up their time and effort. At home to come and manage this with us. From a perspective, Chris kind of elaborated on a lot of that stuff. I'll just give you an idea. Average root. Maybe average about sixty or so nine one one calls a day during this twenty four hour period of time. We averaged about four hundred and sixty four. That's undetermined at this time because we lost a microwave link between all of our towers. For our portables or for our radios, but in addition to that, the nine one one call started being. Transferred over to our secondary P S A, which is Cast County. And I'm going to list to us, Cast County was also down with a generator. So we don't know where those nine one one calls. So we're in the process of determining that rate down. The four hundred and sixty four calls coming in in the twenty four hour period of time. I think its peak was like a hundred and one hour. Chris, am I correct on that? No, no, during that, we're less than.
Yeah, during immediately following the storm is there's so many numbers that can try calling into dispatch at nine one one. And then they can automatically go over to another agency. We have no real way of determining how many of them were denied service from our P S A. But I also just wanted to reiterate that our administrative phone lines were also every single incoming was busy. The United is pretty early. Alarm companies calling here because so many windows got blown out of businesses. But also the, a lot of people didn't utilize text to nine one one because they're ready to go get through on a voice call through their processing.
Ninety six percent of our calls came via a wireless device. So that gives you an idea how their landlines were being used on that particular event. I started receiving phone calls at eleven P M that night in Washington. One A M here time frame. I was on the phone subsequently all night long with staff, Chief Mastin, Sheriff Wells from Cast County. I had, I probably had six or seven sheriffs from the, our area reach out and ask, do you need help? And at that time, I've got to give. An outstanding performance review to the Dometic Fire Department. They did a phenomenal job of mitigating a lot of the issues that we were having with black roads, county highway as well. But the broken gas domains, those kinds of things, they just did a phenomenal job. Four hundred and sixty four calls for service coming in. That's overwhelming. Over that period of time, we had an additional five dispatchers throughout that period of time come in and offer their time. To the E O C and into dispatch. In addition to that, we had an additional five deputies in during that twenty four hour period of time that left their families, left their. Their homes, their families and came out of health. I've got several people in my office that are displaced right now because their homes were. Either destroyed or flooded. And so thankfully we've got, you know, family and friends that are, are, we can roast roast right now. We will be getting to the bottom of some of those, a ridiculous call break. And then in addition to that, how many calls for service that we actually took as a sheriff's office are headed out. Because our, our N S. Because our uh our R N S system, after a hundred forty calls. Or they they were there, we no longer could see them, so we don't know what happened to them. And that's a question that uh our T Deputy has given to our uh records management company. So we hopefully will have that information here.
Thank you, Sheriff Riggs. Uh one thing that um actually Brian brought up to me that. I I'm sure that some of you have already thought about it and hopefully are already taking notes on any lessons learned, things like you just mentioned. Um you know, any anything that we can do better or learn from this experience to 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 take forward. We need to make sure that you, while it's top of mind, jot those things down so that we can can gather up that information later.
Not only is it beneficial for us, but we share those uh whether it was home correction report improvement plan. Uh and there's part of our grant requirements is to share those so that our our neighbors can bring that up.
Thank you. Who's next? Okay, thanks Shane.
Shane Foley of National Resources. Um which will keep it very brief, so. I own two personally, that's a mess. It's a mess, I wouldn't believe, but we got our hands both for a long time. Um for the parks specifically, what the public would be interested in, Rockland Park had really significant damage. I went in on Saturday morning, checked all the parks. Specifically, we have a original campsite. By the grace of God, the people weren't coming in for Sunday because they would be dead. That park is completely destroyed, that campsite is completely destroyed. Um we need poles. Rockland Park is open, we have that all cleaned up. Will and Hill took quite a bit of damage. Um it's now being used as a recite collection site for just highway department purchases. So as of right now, we're closing that park till the highway department has their their work done there. Um Mo Amaze has some trail work that was needed, but it's largely spared and then Three Island Park and Horse Camp were. Um only the future of towns was really good. Um a major problem for us long term is our timber. We lost a ton of timber in Jones, Grand Valley, Turtle River, Fall Township. Um many pine foundations, especially in Jones, who were literally millions of dollars are gone. We're gonna do salvage sales up there soon as possible. Um June sixth or July sixteenth will be the first salvage sale. But the timber that may have sold fifty dollars for in people are sold by. It's gonna be a financial problem for sure. Um and then the third kind of bucket of things that we have to deal with is tax for our properties. Uh we have a couple houses in town that's staying down, we'll sell the tree on top of it. Um but we have many trees down on those parts. Um so we're gonna be digging up for a while.
Thank you, Shane.
Uh our whole lane unit did get hit, a truck had some damage. We did twenty five hundred bucks and then our whole plane trailer uh had replaced the window on that, so that's all being here period of speed. Um as far as veterans, twenty seven hundred plus veterans of the community, we estimate that's around eleven hundred that within the year. We know there's gonna be veterans that experience loss and damage. Um we will be available to the value based on grants. Uh state had grant bill, uh we will get some new information from state tomorrow uh of emergency relief grant for veterans. Uh which is granted now already at five hundred mil. Not a lot, every dollar, you know, and leaving out the better community and surviving spouses. It was like that fifty day effect next week. Um so we can really get it. Call the office and we can walk veterans and spouses and uh families through that process. And we also have the Veterans Relief Grant as well, if it whatever doesn't apply under that emergency grant. Based on, you know, need, we can go the other route as well. Our local D A B chapter, chapter seven has been uh very good with their support as well. Uh had purchased some groceries for veterans who lost everything, so that that was a a great resource for us to tap into for veterans as well. Um we're gonna be on the back end of this mostly with the the cleanup and the grants and people needing some resources. I just wanna make sure that everybody knows that the Veteran Service Office is fully functional. And we're here to support the community, the veterans and spouses and family members of veterans as well.
Thank you, Shane. Thank you. Uh Mr. Chair, I think what we'd like to do is move on to the debris management discussion. And uh we have about maybe twenty twenty five minutes remaining with our time with you, so we have to get through de- debris management. And we also wanna go to disaster reimbursement overview and then uh maybe a little bit on insurance and funding. So uh just as a time check for the remainder of the the presenters. One of the things that I would like to see us try to get a handle on so that the board is aware of what are what are ongoing obligations? What if what have we spent and what is our cost so far? Uh but what are we looking at for ongoing costs? And that's so we can get a handle on, you know, how are we gonna how are we gonna fund this cleanup and and everything else? So um you can keep that in mind as well.
I'll try to cover both highway and solid waste here together.
Thanks, Bruce.
The initial response, uh highway crews were called out. All staff was called out about one thirty. Not happily to say, we had most of the roads cleared by in twelve hours, uh one o'clock, uh we had the roads open for. Travel, that means we've got it cleared to the white line, to the edge line, so traffic can get by, it's not cleared the right away. We did that by just pushing back the trees with equipment, little bit of cutting, but most of it was just equipment pushing it off the road. Um we did have lots of power at the highway facility, but we do have a generator. Uh which is key because that uh provides fuel for us and and a lot of other county uh vehicles. Uh but we also provided fuel, uh gas and fuel for the city. Uh they get their gas from pumps in town and there was. Long lines at those that were open, so we did provide them some uh gas and fuel too. On that solid waste side, uh the again transfer station was without power. They had to set up a temporary uh collection site at the transfer station. Uh M P C A was notified of the situation, which is kind of key helping uh get that uh side of things going. Uh but also uh the, like Chris had pointed out, we saw the need right away. And Brian got some staff to help start covering the demolition landfill, get some additional hours there for what was coming in. Uh so we were, you know, I'm gonna say we did a pretty good job of of getting the initial response done. Uh but now our work is ahead of us with uh what we've got uh for. Collecting the materials and then even on the highway side of getting those cleaned up. Uh right now on the highway side, we have six different crews out cutting. Uh that crew is a skid steer, uh guys on chainsaw. Uh and piling material up alongside the roadway. So six crews, three of them are ours, two are contracted and one is from Lake Woods County. So we do have help from others. We then have another crew that is going around and just collecting those piles. And that is a complete uh contracted uh the loader and three trucks that are going around picking them up. Um and then we have our own crew, uh they've been stuck on Lake Avenue this whole time. Uh just working that one site, one side of the road. Um trying to get that uh cleared up. And so that is a kind of the the worst road for us was uh Lake Avenue. But we've got one crew there cutting, cutting, cleaning and hauling that that away. And soon as we're done there, they can get out across the the county uh polymer, those piles away. Um but right now, we're expecting, you know, potentially a month of month of cleanup for us. On the solid waste side, the demolition landfill uh is accepting waste. Right now, we're open seven to seven, seven days a week. We're gonna be closed for the fourth of July. Um there's, there's a lot of waste coming in immediately on on Monday. But we've been uh making some changes out there, making improvements, making it more efficient for the for the public and for the commercial. Uh haulers bringing materials in. With that need that was seen on Monday, Brian got uh the target site going on Tuesday right away. Uh that was with the help of M P C A coming in to help man. Uh oversee the waste that's coming in, contractor is piling up the material. Uh and then now we also have a grinder there, that material at that site in town will need to be ground and hauled away. And so um we're collecting there, uh it's kind of the same hour, seven to seven, seven days a week. And they close for the four. On the handout there, I kind of gave you some of the. What I'm going through, but the we've got the the traffic or the volume of people coming into those sites. Um initially, we weren't tracking numbers. And so we don't have numbers for all of the days, but the last three days. Around there, we kind of had that rough estimate of. Twenty five hundred cars a day, twenty five hundred vehicles came into the demolition landfill on Monday. And so that was, that was our big rush and need to show that we had to have that additional site up. Uh the second additional site was um put up at the pine products. Uh we directed the commercial haulers there to begin with. Um but once we kind of got our feet under us at the demolition landfill. We closed that down and plus there was a, there's a cost to having these sites open. And so we closed that one down at the end of last week. Um overall, we're. Would like to say we're past the peak rush of people bringing material in, think it's gonna be a long drawn out process. Um we're gonna see it for a while. We're also gonna see the increase in demolition waste. We're just starting to see that kind of waste coming in. At the landfill, so we're, yeah, I think the. It was a quick peak, but we're still got that increased volume of all materials that we're gonna have to deal with. Limitations, um we are solid waste is short staffed to begin with. We don't have staff. Uh or elective duties, we'll say garbage is always coming in, we gotta dress, take care of it. And so there is not the ability to to shift solid waste staff from the transfer station out to the demolition landfill. We've got, right now, for demolition landfill, we've got a contractor and two s- two staff taking care of trees. And a third staff uh taking care of the demolition that's coming in. And so normally, there's one person out there. And so that is uh again, two additional staff and a contractor right now that is making that facility go. So we're short staffed uh with solid waste. And it's hard to go out neutral aid uh because everybody is the same way for on the solid waste, you know, at counties, they don't, they don't have those. Um staff that they can send over here. We, for now, we've been putting in a uh lot of overtime. And uh some highway staff have been helping cover those those hours out there. But we just, we are not gonna be able to sustain those, those hours for those, all of those staff. So that is something that will have to be addressed. And again, we kind of talked about it, the. The the volume of demolition waste is gonna be increasing, but we also are gonna be seeing or have seen increase in just regular garbage coming in. To the transfer station. Um there we are dealing with that or have dealt with that. We've got additional uh trailer released. Uh to help with the extra waste and then we that is contracted hauling. And so the contractor is uh has geared up to handle that additional. Was additional loads going out. Um we've been talking about additional sites, demolition sites. Or sorry, not demolition sites, but tree debris sites, uh different locations. But there's a lot that goes into putting one of those together as on public property, private property. On private property, now you gotta lease, you gotta deal with that waste at some point. Uh inside the city or outside the city. And so inside the city is more expensive because you're gonna have to chip it, that material and haul it away. It's outside and we uh away from the. Residents, uh then we can uh most likely take care of it by burning. Um and so finding a a good site. We have some in mind, but um we just don't have the staff and the the contractors. We we scramble to find the two contractors that we did tell the operator two sites right now. Um they're all busy with their normal construction work and uh and or dealing with uh this. Storm themselves. Um so we're really do not have the the ease of just opening up these additional sites. You know, they all come with a cost um and some. Lot of lot of work to get them going. And so right now with the two sites. They're, yes, yeah, just. There's a cost and uh some extra, a lot of extra work to put in some additional sites. There was also the talk about countywide pickup. And that would be a monumental uh cost for the county to take that over. Cause I mean this damage went across, you know, two townships deep all the way across the county. So you're looking at twelve different townships. Um just at the highway department, we're dealing with two hundred and seventy miles worth of damage. And it's gonna take us uh a month, over a month to go around and collect that up. And that's just debris that's in the right of way. Or if we were to take care of the debris that's outside of the right of way, that I don't even know how you would uh, what factor you would put on there. I mean, my own case, um I mean, I have the numbers here on this for you, but that's potentially like ten times as much. The township road I live on had three trees down, while my yard's got thirty five trees. And that's just me, there's no neighbors. And all of, if all of that waste were to be going out to the road right away to be picked up by somebody, that's just. I don't know what factor to put on, it'd just be a huge undertaking for the county to be looking at addressing. All of the tree debris waste across the county, not taking it out to all the roads. Again, we got two hundred and seventy miles of road in that area. There, there's over three hundred miles of township roads, the city's got over a hundred miles. I mean, it. And my estimate in here to take care of all of that is like a seven million dollar figure. Based on what we're just at the highway department is dealing with right now. And that's just, it's a huge undertaking for us to to do. So I. Chris will get into it also about what is covered, but the the reimbursement that we get is for um restoring public facilities. And it's not for the private, when restoring or hauling the private debris. And so those are ineligible costs for us if we're out there um picking up all of that waste. And so that's just a huge, huge undertaking for us to consider. On the solid waste side, there's a lot of different things going on. I mean, we're looking at what to do with the the chips, the mulch from these sites. Uh the potential of uh utilizing the wood for firewood. Um we, we just don't have a a good idea of where we're where we're at, how much we're gonna uh be dealing with. Just like Shane has got thousands of parcels and acres out there to be looking at. You know, we're, we don't know what we're gonna be seeing at the solid waste facility far as a tree debris coming in. Or uh demolition waste coming in. We just don't have a a easy way of pulling that number out, out of uh somewhere to figure out. Or at, and so we've asked for some of those assessments. Um and so hopefully some of that is in the works and can help us. Um some of the key questions that the board will have to be thinking about and helping us determine is what level of service we are providing. Additional sites, hours of service, you know, is it seven days, seven, you know, twelve hour days? Or uh you know, what time? Can we reduce that level of service? There's different means of addressing this with different pieces of equipment. Uh but they all come with with costs and. I put a lot of that in those handouts for you to help um when we get to those questions and those those decisions. Again, these are, we're only days into it here for us and you know, these are guesses and best guesses and estimates. Of where we're at or what we can do. Otherwise. I'm gonna say that's our summary.
All right, uh Chris, do you wanna walk us through the um process for reimbursement and eligibility and timeframes and all that?
Right now, Beltrane gun is the only one in that, but we do have other counties um that have been impacted by uh this storm. And working with our regional program coordinator, she's been working out of our E O C, but also serving the other counties that have been impacted. And some of the damage reports that they're uh bringing in are kind of trending towards this may be to the level. Um of becoming potentially one where the. Kind of trending towards this may be to the level um of becoming potentially one where the. Could see the governor request FEMA uh assistance. That is probably quite a ways out yet. Um and then again, that is uh an entire another process. Um that is uh gonna take quite a while. We do get to that ten point seven million dollars. Uh that the state collectively needs for one event, uh which what I'm hearing today is we're gonna be contributing. Uh even more than I initially thought. We're approaching uh on five million dollars just for uh Beltrami County. So. For Beltrami County specifically, when we achieve our two hundred and eighteen thousand dollars and change. Uh federal indicator is we report to Homeland Security Emergency Management. And upon that is, if we hit fifty percent of that federal indicator. Is that is when the disaster assistance contingency account um is accessible for uh eligible uh. Activity. Eligible activity is in the seven categories of. Of debris clearance, protective measures, roads and bridges, water control facilities, buildings and equipment, utilities, recreation and other. So we've got our collecting numbers, I've already reported out. Um to HSEM that we are gonna be requesting a preliminary damage assessment, even though I can pretty much guarantee. Uh with high certainty that we are going to uh achieve that, even with mid-dutch report alone. Uh that they're reporting that they have a five hundred thousand dollars, uh just under one ninety-seven, two seven one quarter of those. Uh in Beltrami County. So that process is already well underway. Um once uh HSEM is able to schedule those. Um that's when we're getting a little bit more firm numbers, but sometimes they would want that information. We wanna get through this process as quickly as we can because we don't want to see the county uh expending a tremendous amount of uh dollars. Uh and then having to uh to wait for the process to catch up. So we're gonna try to write the way because it's mostly the events of the. Uh events in the past and hopefully the rain and hurricanes um will follow through that because the budget is just set. So there's, you know, the fund is running on it. Uh so there is uh money there. It's just a process that goes through. Uh when HSEM does come up to do the preliminary damage assessment, they'll leave potential applicants. Uh and just verify those damages and then we will work with the public assistance recovery I've looked at at HSEM. And uh that's when we will get the official declaration, uh and we can start submitting bills, we can start. Proving that we have these costs and these losses uh and starting those uh reimbursement calls. Um again, the FEMA thing is a little bit separate from going to have state disaster, but. Whenever we think that there's a possibility of federal uh indicator being met, we treat all disasters as if they will be going federal. Um but uh you know, the the state process is a little bit easier. But the big difference between that is under Minnesota law, when it comes to disaster assistance contingency accounts. Is if you do get that major uh disaster declaration from uh the president is seventy-five percent of that comes from FEMA. And twenty-five percent comes from the DACA. So that would be monumental for us if we did get a federal declaration. And that would be a hundred percent full versus uh seventy-five percent. Uh and you know, the numbers are starting to get up there with that twenty-five percent, very well could be a couple of million dollars that uh. Yeah, for twenty-five percent, that Beltrami County of uh would have. I imagine that it is going to be weeks before that next step takes place. Even though we're gonna be in continuous contact uh with HSEM. Uh but Bruce is right, this is going to be an event that our community, our counties are gonna be responding to for months. And you know, potentially moving to next year, uh by the time all of the uh the damages is cleaned up. And then uh members of our community are expressing additional concerns um with if that timber does not collect. If we are identified that has revolvability analysis that wildfire is our our number one hazard, we believe that. As Shane mentioned, millions of dollars, timber, whatever that complies to his actual sticks on the ground. You know, that's gonna be concerning for us when we move forward. Um is there anything you'd like me to elaborate on on your reversal cost?
You go ahead, Commissioner Winger.
I have one question, Don. Does the timber that he's talking about come into play on the dollar value?
Uh but they will be getting back to us. One question that was brought up and Shane confirmed that it was not, is if it wasn't heard. Uh because it is kind of uh like a farmer having a farm crop and having hailstorm with you. But this was a windstorm that took our inventory, our product, and now we're out that money, but. Um if we had insurance, insurance did that, the load would have been reimbursable, but we did not get a clear answer on that, but they were gonna check with the PA staff.
Thank you. Commissioner Carlson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So Chris, how long a period of time do we have? To be able to complete our claim? Is, do they cut us off at a certain point? Or do we, I mean, if if we are still experiencing costs twelve months from now, I mean, there must be some cutoff somewhere, isn't there?
With the disasters, right, it's not gonna be um like the guard disaster declaration last year was for the July thirty-one storm. Uh that hit us where we were able to uh pretty much wrap that up within a couple of weeks of getting everything cleared up. Where this is gonna be a long-term, multi-month process, depending on if it goes federal versus uh state. Uh the state would probably be a little bit more flexible for us and kind of give payment as well. That's speculation, not promised. Uh because you know, we're gonna, our departments are gonna have another money, we're gonna need that replenish. Uh to continue that work. So uh we'll work closely with the uh the Homeland Security Emergency Management staff. Uh to make sure that uh we're able to buy a good price.
Thank you, Commissioner Carlson. Anybody else have any questions yet? Okay, Tom, what's uh?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple other quick things, as it relates to funding and insurance. You know, buildings are insured, we do ensure those, our inventory is not, so uh there will be definitely losses that the county takes on this. And of course, as we work with our insurance company, MCIT, uh we'll figure out what's actually insured and for how much. Depending upon what kind of damage was done, what exclusions we had on the insurance policy. You know, the same thing that everybody else goes through with their private insurance company, is this covered, is that covered, why isn't this? Oh, it's covered when it's, you know. A rain-driven event, but it's not covered if it's surface water or subsurface water, right? So we go, we get these same sorts of things that we're gonna have to go through and. And sluice out with our insurance company to figure out what's covered and and what's not. So we we don't have that. Yet identified in regard to specific dollar amounts, but we are collecting information, we're documenting, we're collecting pictures and we're engaged with the uh. With the insurance company on that. And as it relates to funding available, at least immediately for. Uh financing the continued activities that are associated with the, with the response and the recovery. Um you do have a couple of options immediately available to you that uh do not impact local tax dollars. And that would be two funds that we have been um that you're familiar with, that we've been holding. One of them is the. Local Assistance and Tribal Consistency Fund. This is money, one-time money that we received several years ago from the American Rescue Plan Act. Uh it was a total of about four hundred thousand dollars. You encumbered about five thousand of that, so you have three hundred and ninety-five thousand plus or minus a few dollars. Of that funding available. Uh you also have the remainder of the ARPA, the American Rescue Act Plan Dollars, which was also a separate appropriation one time. That we've been using over the years to buy one-time things and and sort of stave off um tax levy increases. And uh that fund sits at about one point two five million unencumbered. Uh I would like to request um consideration to hold maybe a hundred and fifty of that for this next budget process. Uh which would leave you, if you agreed, at about one point one, just over one million dollars. So between those two funds, um. If you set aside that hundred and fifty thousand, you could have access to one point five million pretty much immediately without having to do any kind of. Local tax adjustment or or, you know, schedule for that. So I just wanted to provide that to you, um and you know, if that's where we end up going, we may come back for an authorization to tap into that money. If you have different ideas or other sources of funding that you'd like us to look into, we can certainly uh investigate that as well. But yeah, this is, this is, as everyone has said, going to be a long time recovery. Uh it's gonna require patience. Um both working with other agencies and in time to get things um addressed and corrected. But I I did want to leave you with that information so you knew that we had at least immediately uh some funding available to um address immediate needs.
Uh Commissioner Sumner?
Uh, Mr. Chair, uh thank you. So with, in regards to the LAT CF, uh if I might correct Tom, it did not come from the, the. Rescue plan. It came from NACO when NACO um lobbied the legislature out of Congress. For these uh funds for PILT um efforts, so that's where the LAT CF fund came from.
Well, but it was still part of the American Rescue Plan Act. Money was financed through the American Rescue Plan Act, but yes, it was related to PILT monies. That were identified as one.
And I, you know, so. I've always advocated, you know, to not spend, you know, these dollars, but I think, you know, this is a type of situation where. It's something that we should consider, you know, um allocating some of this. I mean, to hear. Shane talk about, you know, the this dev- the devastation, you know, to the forest and and potentially. Using this to, you know, kind of. Help uh with those efforts because I I think we all know, um you know, we. Depend on on our forests for for a lot of things, especially when it comes to, you know, the county development fund and uh. You know, helping schools and townships and and things like that. So I would, I would be in favor of. Um having a discussion about how to, you know, reallocate some of these funds from from the. The ARPA and LAT CF, uh you know. I also want to mention that, you know, I think. You know, I want to thank, thank the uh management team for coming in today and giving us an update. You know, I always talk about, you know, we're lucky here in Beltrami County because we have, you know. Staff that, you know, can really adapt and adjust to certain situations, you know, and called upon it. And I always brag that uh, you know, Beltrami County has, you know. A staff that are second to none, and I think, you know, this past week has shown that. You guys' ability to help, you know, lead us through this um, you know, unfortunate circumstance, you know, has proven that. You guys, you know, really stepped up when when we needed you guys the most and. And I appreciate, you know, everything that you guys have done, you know, I know Chris has has gotten a lot of, you know, kudos and 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 uh. But he also mentions that, you know, he's not in it alone. And uh today is just an opportunity to thank uh each and every one of you, so I, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Sumner. Um to your point, Tom, that that money is one piece of the puzzle. I also, I know I talked to you about um where our reserve funds at, because we gotta front load all these expenses and. And what have, how much have we, how much are we already on the hook for? And, you know, if hopefully we get seventy-five percent reimbursement, but that's six months down the road. We have to be able to still maintain our, our normal expenses, all of our normal operations and and just, you know. At some point here, we need to know what, what we're looking at for a total bill that we have to, you know, front, you know, to pay upfront. And then, you know, the one and a half million, so say we have a six million dollar bill when it's all said and done here for the next few months. Um that one and a half million just covers for twenty-five percent of that six million, and but we gotta have the six million to pay. Upfront, and so do we have the six million even if that's what it comes down to? That's, those are the kinds of things I think the board needs to know as soon as possible so that we can make educated decisions on, on how we're gonna, how we're gonna keep. Funding this cleanup program and everything.
Yeah, to answer your question, just really quickly, you know that we carry general fund reserves in a number of different areas. And the board made a wise decision some years ago to increase those reserves from around four months. To a range of four to six months. So currently, we're running at about four and a half, or excuse me, five and a half months of reserves. Which would give you access essentially under that policy to about a month and a half's worth of reserves. So we could approach, you know, the ten to maybe twelve million dollar mark. With that amount of reserves remaining so that you know what you have sort of available. But that would put us in a precarious situation if we used every dime of that, because you never know when the next disaster or the next situation is going to come. So we wouldn't advise going that high, but just to answer your question, that's what you'd have uh essentially um available. So if you add that to your other dollar amounts that I just mentioned, you could get up to, you know, thirteen, maybe fourteen million. Um but again, wouldn't advise taking all of that and setting it for this uh event.
Okay, so do we have the number of where we're at right now as far as how much we have expended for? You know, the contractors that we've hired for the highway department, for the solid waste department and other these, these other things, do we have any, any kind of total number that we can? Can say we're, we're, right now, we're at one point two million, or what, what are we at so far?
I guess it depends on what total you're looking for, right?
I'm looking for the reimbursable.
Yeah.
Total.
So I'll let, um, I know Brian's got some figures and I think, um, you know, the reality is, Mr. Chair, that those numbers are coming in every day.
Absolutely.
Every hour they change, so.
I'm just looking for ballparks, you know.
Yeah.
You know, it's more than ten thousand, it's less than fifty million. Where are we at?
We're probably in that ballpark, yeah, you know, for sure.
I can tell you as far as solid waste, we're in that hundred ninety to two hundred thousand right now.
Okay. Bruce or anybody else have any rough numbers of?
Yep.
Okay, doing some quick ciphering.
Through the twenty-fifth, so that was twenty days ago.
Yeah.
We were at about a hundred and sixty.
Okay. So we're. And Brian, your numbers were as of pretty close to.
Today.
As of today, okay. So we're not super high numbers yet anyways, that's good.
Well, at least in those areas. I mean, you still have areas like the facilities damage that we have, that's gonna get allayed up, you know, uh those types of things, but yeah, you're not.
Some of those will be covered by insurance, though, wouldn't they?
It should be, but of course you have deductibles and of course you're gonna pay for that again next year when the insurance premiums go up like all the rest of us are going to see. Um but yeah, I I think um it's safe to say, although we are concerned about it. Uh we're probably south of the million dollar mark at the moment. Um but there's probably significantly more coming and depending upon how long we run the operation. In certain areas, you know, that number is gonna grow considerably going forward too.
And the other part of the reason for me asking that is based on, you know, if we were already maxing out what we could spend, then. Setting up another site that's more convenient for the, the area that got hit on the south and eastern side of the, of the city. If we do have some, some locations that are potentials where we wouldn't have to move it twice, wouldn't have to shred it. Um to me, that would be logical that we would try to get something set up there if we can afford it. And it sounds like right now we might be able to afford it, other than the fact that we, you know, don't have the staffing to do it. And so that's a a huge part of this, is we gotta get, you know, outside staffing in order to be able to, to do this. So we don't burn out our guys and and um, you know, I don't know what the feasibility of that is, but I think we as a board need to. Make, make a point on, or, or what do we authorize to be able to, to get that additional staffing to be able to. Um support that type of operation. Commissioner Carlson and or?
Go ahead, Chris.
Go ahead, Chris, yep.
The sooner that me as the counties that are going in on this declaration can get some pretty solid numbers that we just see on the quicker. They're gonna be able to make a determination if we're gonna go federal, if we're gonna save state. As far as some of the bigger expenses that the highway department and solid waste division are gonna have outside of personnel and contracted work. Is the use of our equipment and, you know, that's payable hours as well. Um I imagine that numbers will be friends. High considering the amount of resources that we deploy. We already have those resources and the numbers all have dollars associated with it. So that's money that we're not gonna have to spend right away, but we'll get reimbursed for it eventually.
Yeah. Mr. Carlson?
Uh thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh. Tom, I'm just wondering, because the numbers are coming in slowly at this point and, but we also know that they're gonna be very large at some point. Um at what point do, are you going to need board action? Uh would it be the next meeting or will it not be for another month because we just don't have enough numbers? I mean, that's, obviously, we can't take. Sounds like we have, we're okay for a couple of weeks, but by, is it by the next meeting that we have to do some? Decision-making or is it beyond that?
It's, it's possible. I mean, it would be, um, there's a couple of things that you could do, you could authorize the use of some of that one-time money that we've already talked about immediately to access. And start reimbursing departments for their expenses and that sort of stuff. And then, and we just track it and then hopefully get reimbursed here. Uh so that was something you could immediately, I don't know that you need to immediately do that, but if you wanted to, that'd be something you could do this afternoon, um at the regular session. But we're gonna be putting together um essentially a plan. I know Brian and I and Bruce have talked about another remote site. How much resources, how much staff, how much time, uh and, you know, what that would cost to to stand something else up. We're also watching the numbers at the landfill and at the um old fairground site, which are dwindling down or. We're also watching the numbers at the landfill and at the old fairground site, which are dwindling down or going down. I shouldn't say dwindling, but they're going down. We don't know if that's an anomaly or maybe people are taking a break and they're going to come back up. So we, we don't know what demand necessarily is as well. We know that a lot of the material is going to remain on site. I mean, there's so much of this stuff that's probably not ever going to be pulled off people's properties, you know, who have 10 or 15 or 20 acres. So, you know, gauging how much we need to run and for how long and, and, and all of that stuff is still something we're sort of evaluating at this point in time. But when we do have that information together, we'll definitely come for probably, you know, either a budget amendment or some authorization to access funding above and beyond the budgets that have been approved by the board. So we have spending authority. We are operating under the emergency declaration. And so that does give us a much more streamlined approach to procurement as well. But we want to be mindful about the procurement process and make sure we're getting the best deal, that we're cost conscious about what it is that we're purchasing. As you know, a lot of things are going on out in town now where there's price gouging and those types of things. And we don't want to be a victim of that either. So, so all of that's going to be considered as well. But yes, at some point we'll be coming back and asking for formal movements of funds and that sort of stuff. And we also need to be tracking this because what we don't want to do is, you know, spend up to that limit, whatever that limit is. We need to be conscientious of that. And, you know, that may be a trade-off in service delivery, right? In our ability to process material with the resources we have versus, you know, throwing a ton of resources and processing stuff really quickly. All of those are trade-offs. And so that's partly what, particularly on the debris management side of things, is being evaluated at this point in time too.
I'm very thankful that the decisions were made, you know, by Brian and the, and the highway department and you to stand up the target site. I think that's worked really well for our, our county residents. And, and I want to see that type of mentality, you know, not be a hindrance. And so if we need to allocate some funds, you know, the ARPA funds or, or the L T C F, whatever funds, you know, to make sure that we, that we as a board aren't, aren't a hindrance in making those good decisions to continue. I'd like to see us do that sooner than later. So that if, if there's a, you know, opportunity that presents itself to make things better, easier for the, for the residents, I want to see that happen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Maybe a question I can ask to help us put together a plan for the long-term debris management process. You know, one of the things that is very typical is that when you hire contracts, is the rates, contractors, the rate's pretty high. And right now it's tough to find contractors too. So we've talked about internally maybe hiring temporary staff and maybe going after leases of equipment. So we're resource limited on equipment and we're resource limited on staff. So we may also bring with our recommendation the need to add a few staff for a short period of time. Of course, we have to work with the unions to make sure they're okay with that. We also have to work to find the equipment and enter into leases. And so we're, we, we need a little bit of time to sort of figure out where we can do that. Of course, getting staff on isn't as simply as getting them on and away they go. There may be some training required, you know, getting licensed people to run large equipment is, is tough. I mean, we can't do that now. Before the storm, it was difficult to be fully staffed. So, so this is, it's tough. I mean, if we had unlimited resources, obviously it'd be a lot easier, but we don't. And so we just work with what we can. And that's why some of the answers are slow in coming because we're, we're just not really sure where we can resource a lot of the needs that we have in regard to the response. So, but we'll continue to, to work diligently on resolving those issues and make those recommendations to you. And as I mentioned, maybe to one or two of you on the side, you know, we do not necessarily have to wait every two to three weeks to have a board meeting. We can call a board meeting when it's prudent and issue a special meeting and notice it and then get you guys convened and, and keep things kind of moving, should the pace require that. So there are options available to us and also continue to try to fast pace to the degree we can, our response to things.
Thank you, Tom.
Mr. Chair.
Yep, Commissioner Sumner.
You know, I wanted hearing from Tom about, you know, the need, you know, and, you know, hearing and understanding, you know, and trying to understand, you know, the sense of urgency to allocate these funds. Could I suggest that maybe in a week or, or next month? It sounds like there's still needs to be time to gather some numbers. It's, you know, because I like to, you know, see these numbers, you know, in black and white before I, you know, approve of anything. And I, I think I stated that in the past as well. And, and it's something I support, but it's, it's hard for me to support something that comes, you know, last minute. But I'm only one person, so thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Sumner. Brian?
I guess I, I got to speak for my, my division that if, if it's a week, two weeks, a month is way too long. For right now, my guys have, they don't get any rest. They're working 13 hours a day and, and they're all working. There is no time off. We're, we're trying to get, some of, some of them asked for the 4th of July off. Some of them, we've, you know, the work, a couple of things going on there. But again, we are so limited in staff that doing this is, it's wearing on the guys already. We've, we've experienced this in the past during other emergencies. COVID hit us hard. We, it took a toll on our guys. And I just ask that we're more, I guess, response, responsive to this. And, um, yeah, they're just tired.
Thank you, Brian. That's my, my point is that we should allocate at least some of those funds so that the good decisions could be made by the people that we have in those departments. And we, that we trust them to make the good decisions like they did with the, the target site and, and standing that up. We didn't have a board meeting for that. It just got done. And we need to have more of that as quick as possible so the residents can get things taken care of. They already have enough to deal with. We need to give them, give our, the tools to our, our staff to make those decisions.
Oh, Mr. Chair.
Yep.
Uh, what exactly are those tools?
Ability to hire temporary staff, everything that Tom just said, you know.
Oh, but they're having a hard time looking for, for contractors now, right?
Or on the handout that we gave. Even make one all the way around over to Tom.
Oh, there's an extra one.
But we were asking for additional staff, two additional staff, temporary. But we were at, the temporary for us was two years. Was this going to be a long term, yeah, free debris and demolition coming in? So we were, our recommendation on the second page of that at the bottom is the recommendation to hire two additional staff for a two-year period, lease the material handler. And then, but then it's, we need to figure out that level of service, what day that we're going to deal. That, that's seven days a week. 12 hours to the public means 13 hours for staff. At some point, we need to be reducing, reducing those hours of that level of service. But again, our, our quick recommendation was that temporary staff or additional staff.
I guess I'd like to follow on with that just, and that's not fast either because we got to go through all, all the stuff that Tom mentioned and post it and all that stuff. So we're, but honestly, we're still talking a month.
Oh, Mr.
At least for that to happen. You know, we do have some contractors out there. I would say that yes, the target site and the landfill, they're being run very efficiently right now. And there isn't absolutely no wait line. I just went, drove by both of them before I came here to see. And there was three to four vehicles using the sites. Now, I, I believe that's because it's a Tuesday and everyone else is working. So I think we're going to see spikes in this, especially probably on weekends. I don't think we've necessarily seen all the debris coming in just because of the fact that everyone's like us. We have to go to work. We have to make some money to make this thing happen. So, um, that's why it's going to be for us. The last storm we had was two summers before we seen relief from that. This one is going to be a lot longer than that.
Thanks, Brian. Commissioner Sumner?
Well, Mr. Chair, so I'm just wondering, you know, if we, if we do this, how is that going to impact, you know, the current staff? Are they, are they going to be able to take time off this weekend or what, what's the plan? I mean, if, if it's going to take some time to hire two additional, I'm, I'm, I guess I'm not understanding. If we approve this funding, how is that going to help so quickly? You know, I'm, I'm asking, you know, if we can take a couple of weeks. I understand, you know, that the, the position that they're in, and I'm thankful for, for what your staff has done. You know, we, we have also an emergency manager that has worked additional hours too. And maybe that's something that we should, you know, discuss if we're going to be discussing, you know, additional staff and the pressures that they've been under this past week into consideration. But I, I am respectfully asking for at least a couple more weeks. That way we can get this in writing. And I understand, you know, how this will all work out. But if, but if that's, you know, not the wishes of the board, you know, then, you know, it's not going to be the first or the last time that, you know, I, I would lose a vote. But, you know, I, I, I try to be respectful and, and support, you know, your guys' decisions when, when it comes to times like this, you know, where we want to be united. And, you know, a couple of weeks, it's all I'm asking for, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Sumner, Commissioner Carlson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I think if I understand correctly, maybe what we need is a head nod to go ahead, to have Tom and your department go ahead and start pursuing these. Because you can't probably get someone tomorrow. Or if you can, great, I guess. But where, where we are generally in agreement that we would like you to proceed to do that, add a couple of people. You gotta go through all the union stuff and everything else. But at least if you have some direction from the board with a head nod, it's a, yeah, please proceed in that direction and then come back with a, a hard proposal at the next board meeting. Is that, would that work?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Carlson, I think that would work because it would authorize us to engage with the union, to identify these project employees and to work out an MOA on that issue. And to also then go ahead and post the position. And your direction could include, you know, do not hire, like do not offer the position until that decision's been formalized by the board, but at least advertise for it right now. That, that's part of the problem is advertising, going through the interview process and that sort of stuff. Of course, we want that approval. If we could get it in the next two weeks, that'd be great. I mean, that wouldn't compromise any of the, you know, candidates. Because, you know, we would have a decision well before we interviewed that they were, this was going to be a permanent two-year position or whatever it is that you agree to. So I think that would be very helpful for us and that we can get that ball rolling. I also think it'd be helpful for the team because, you know, the team will see that the board is being proactive on this. And that relief is coming and hopefully sooner than later.
Brian?
Yeah, I guess to fill in the gap, and I'm going to be requesting that actually on, on the 5th is support from, from Bruce as far as trying to take some of his employees and fill in some of the gaps in the interim. So that's, that's the stopgap. It's not necessarily the fix because he's got things that they have to do as well. I just don't have any, after the 5th, I got guys that have committed to things, if it's a going to resort or.
Whatever.
Family things throughout this weekend. I just can't support the 5th and the 6th. And I couldn't support last Sunday. Last Sunday, Bruce provided two individuals for that. So, um, a benefit for the, well, the 4th is probably going to rain in the afternoon. And then on the 5th, for the current, current weather, if it's holds true, I would also ask the board to look at that and say, we're going to be closed on the 5th because if it rains all day, in my opinion, there's no need to be open.
Thanks, Brian. So, Minister Barry, we're running like long on time here. At, at this point, do we, do we have a consensus to, to move forward with the, the pursuit of hiring people? You look, are you, you guys in general consensus of that, Commissioner Sumner? Okay, so I'd say yes.
PC and equipment, we'll start looking into that, bring that back to the next meeting. And then hopefully make more of our foundation on top of the position levels and that sort of stuff and having it supported from the union. And by that time, both of you, all of the funding that we can then move to these issues as well. And we'll have a lot more.
And if something does come up, since we're being overly cautious by not necessarily doing it tonight, then we might have to have a special meeting in between now and our next meeting and just pull the trigger at that point on the funding if we're not going to do it tonight. So, okay. All right. I think we need to move on in the interest of time here. We're on to environmental services department permit process. I don't think that should take us a whole, whole lot of time here probably.
Jack Moon Fisher, thank you, environmental services director. There was this conversation around permitting and local permitting, what's going to be required and different entities. And I know there's some confusion, but I just wanted to really come here tonight and explain what permits are required from the county environmental service department, when they're required and where they're required. So starting out by saying, our county environmental service department, when it comes to like buildings, we don't technically issue building permits, we issue land use permits. And so we don't enforce a state building code. So when you enforce a state building code, there's lots of permits required, lots of different things like roofing or drywall or footings. There's lots of different things. We just require that new permits, it's more of a zoning issue. And saying that yes, you can build a building of this size in this location and with this maximum height and it's used for this purpose. And so the records that are kept and tracked and everything and, um, long-term, it's a program that works very well. It only applies in Beltrami County and the shoreline area. And so our GIS director, Kevin Trout, put together this little graphic for us. If you focus on the bottom two rows of townships, that's where most of the storm damage is. I really just wanted to highlight the, the yellow areas are areas where our local vaulleys, partners, you know, the townships and cities issue permits on their own. The county doesn't issue land use permits in that yellow area. The white area is in the non-shoreline area where no permits are required from the county office for like putting up a residential structure or a grab or something like that. The light blue, as you can tell, is all the lakes. And the dark blue is the area where the county shoreline ordinance applies and building permits are required or land use permits are required. So I, I just wanted to, this graphic I think is really good to show that we're really talking geographically, a really small area. So, so those people, what I wanted to kind of get out to those people that are in those areas is that our, our intent and plan is to continue work as normal in that area. We don't require permits for things like repairing a roof or replacing windows or replacing siding or doing all of those things where, you know, I'm seeing just myself anecdotally a lot of that type of work that's going to happen in those areas, at least outside of PILT. We don't require permits for that table. So just if, if a building is destroyed and needs to be rebuilt, we require a permit for that. There is a, there is a fee with that or the cost to the county to issue that permit. The fees are generally reflective of those costs directly. And unless directed otherwise, we'll be continuing to, to move in that direction. And I just wanted to remind people that my conversations with the insurance folks has been that those permit fees are covered by insurance. Those are building losses that'll be probably, most likely insurance claims. And they'll be those fees will be covered by insurance. So we didn't think that at this point in time, that we need to spread that cost out amongst our taxpayers when insurance companies will take that, like in P M. So that's, that's really kind of all I have about permit process update is to clarify where and, and how that's going to work. The other two things I just wanted to quickly mention is that I'm a little concerned about septic systems out there. So these people are having trucks and skid steers and all sorts of stuff and ripping out roofs and rip balls and digging and heavy equipment. So anybody listening, please be careful. Try not to damage your septic system. If you need information about where your septic system is, our office is here to help you. We'll have, we'll give whatever records we have. Some of the drawings are pretty bad. Some of them are really good and they show at least some side of the house, the drain field that you have on or where a tank is located. I don't want to see somebody. Some of them are really good and they show which side of the house the drain field might be on or where a tank is located. I don't wanna see somebody. Drop a piece of equipment in the tank or somebody ruining their septic system when they're just trying to pull a tree or something else. And then the last thing I'll mention is that our office with partnership with the Southern Water Conservation District is already beginning. Conversation about trees and replanting and. How we, a lot of people are emotionally impacted by the loss. Our city will never look the same. And and I would argue that. That's not entirely true. Our city will have, our area will have the same in our lifetime. But we can do things to mitigate that so that future generations.
Thanks, Brent. Anybody have any questions for Brent regarding the land use permit and our processes or anything? Okay, we we don't have anything on our agenda for, on our regular agenda for this and and nothing in consent or anything like that, correct? So if there aren't any wishes for anything from the board, we will leave it at that. That's what it looks like. Thank you, Brent. And we move on to storage building, new construction. I think we're probably gonna have to push the judicial ditch until another time by the looks of our timeframe here unless it's real quick when we. Have to get through the storage building. Commissioner Carlson?
Mister Chair, thank you. I'm just wondering. Is there any urgency, Tom, on the judicial ditch or can that wait for two weeks?
We can move that to the regular agenda so you could discuss it and make a decision on the public hearing date. My suggestion would be just to take items seven and eight and move those to the regular session. As additional items and then you can get through everything tonight.
Yeah, let's do that. Commissioner Winger, you can move number seven and administrator update to the regular agenda. And put those as whatever that is. Nine A and B, thank you. All right, so we're the storage building, new construction. Who's taking that one?
Steve and I are doing that. So Shane Bulley, that is the management director, myself, Steve Shatter, facilities management director. And then previous chain, it was the previous NRM director, we've been working for a couple of years trying to. Come up with a proposal to replace the existing storage buildings that are behind Target. That's a, that's a property that's been talked about. Maybe putting up for sale at some point in the future for commercial development for a higher, better use. And we've been working and the buildings are quite rare. They're old and not very, they're not very nice.
One does have a new tarp on it, though.
Places are still plenty. Here, I just highlighted, here's the current location, behind Target, it's those three metal roof buildings on the west side of the property. There's our star map pictures. That's one of our parts of our storage building, water inside. Anyway, good timing, right? Here's a rough drawing from a while ago. This isn't reflective of the actual plans currently, but I just wanted to show. The main highway department building is on the north side of that. The impound lot is on the south side of this aerial. And the the big red rectangle is roughly in the location where we're talking about this storage building. The small one is a possible potential location for a future ski club building. There's a, they'll come to board at some point in the future. But we remember a while ago, the board offered them to explore the concept of doing that. And I think they're working with NRM directors. We probably do that sometime in the next couple of years. Here's the site layout. So we've been working with several different people, Freeburg and Grant drew this up, civil engineering stuff. Site layout is, it's kept as close to Adams Avenue as we pretty much could. Laid it out so we can access the building between those two driveways that are already existing, trying to reduce passing as much as possible. And we're frankly trying to stay as close to Adams Avenue as possible so we can eliminate any potential future impact conflict with. Any highway department work that might become dirty for even a year, so I'm trying to stay away as many as possible. This is a drawing showing how the building is gonna be separated out with. Environmental services kind of on the right, facilities management in the center and NRM on the on the left. The environmental services stuff is facing north. One of those sides is just storage. One side is our tree shack. redistribution that we currently have at the storage building behind Target. NRM is, you know, a lot of storage, snowmobiles, four-wheelers, trailers, that type of stuff. And facilities management is storing a lot of our building supplies and partitions and cubicle and extra stuff. So. We're building a building as big as we can. We think we fulfill our needs and I'm quite confident that we will. Architectural drawings, just rough side views. North end, south end, pretty basic, pretty simple, trying to be efficient and be not a ho, we're not. Going over the top here with design features and things of that nature. In the 2025 budget process that happened last year, this is the budget that was approved. It was seven hundred thousand dollars. We had three hundred thousand dollars identified from a recurring reserve fund. Hundred dozen dollars from NRM storage buildings or fund and three hundred thousand dollars from that are funded, dedicated to this. So the, really the, trying to get the storage use out of the, to leave behind Target. And allow for whatever the board decides to do with that property in the future. Steve did a great job of getting bid packets out, working with contractors. They held a bid opening June twentieth. Yeah, that Friday. And bids came in. Very good. We were hoping for the ability to build this building within budget. It's really gonna struggle trying to come up with a budget for this building, like. We didn't know how much it was gonna cost, so we had to start putting stuff out there. But high-tech construction, a brainer, right? Was the low bidder at four hundred ninety-eight thousand. That's been vetted and and Steve's comfortable with that, that through there. So the. This is the rough preliminary budget for the project. So we got high-tech construction on the top at four ninety-eight. There is some upgrades cuz the like doors and stuff will come along in the week prior. And there's some upgrades in there. Heating, cooling, water line stuff at about seventy-nine thousand. Electrical about thirty-seven, utility infrastructure, hookups, natural gas, stuff, money, air. We've got twenty-five in there for signage. And then there's sixty-five thousand, seventy-eight dollars left over of that seven hundred thousand dollar budget. So we're, we just put in there the ten percent of that six thirty-four would be like tuition fund. And then we also have FFE built-in combined in a pot there at the end, so we can do picture shelving, that kind of stuff. With whatever's remaining. That's the overall preliminary budget. Steve has gone out to different contractors who've gotten quotes for. Like electrical and heating and cooling and all that stuff already. So we're pretty comfortable with these these numbers. We feel real solid. Next steps. So we would need, request board action to approve the project and award the bid to high-tech construction. The the construction bidding packet, everything said construction is planned to be completed by end of year twenty twenty-five. So substantial completion was like early December.
Substantial completion is December fifteenth and final completion December thirtieth.
And then, once that's completed, we'll work on getting everything moved over to new buildings and old storage buildings will vacate it. As soon as possible.
And I see that it is on the consent agenda for this evening, so. Commissioner, Commissioner Carlson?
Thank you, Mister Chair. So Brent, did the storm help clear that land out for us or do we still gonna have to cut some trees?
You know, we're gonna have to do some site prep. That's in the bid package. And I did try to talk Bruce into doing some clearing there, just saying it was storm.
Yeah, otherwise busy, yeah. So any further questions for Brent?
Mister Chair, one question, is is high-tech construction, are they local or were they?
Thank you. Thanks, guys. It sounds like that's okay to leave it on consent and. We move the other things to our regular agenda. So. Commissioner Winger, you've got those on as nine A and nine B. And we will adjourn until five o'clock for the regular meeting.